That's going to do lead us in the pledge tonight. It is Aubrey Arts. She's a kindergarten student at Otis Elementary. Her teacher is Mrs. Bates. And she is the daughter of Kayla Kips and Alan and Stacy Arts. So if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Aubrey is going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and visible with charity and justice for.
Oh, God.
Nice.
All right. Thank you, Aubrey. Um, let's see. Roll call, please.
All right, just a second. Um, Mrs. Bloom.
Here.
Ms. Lehman.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Nally.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here. And again, motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held on May 12th, 2025.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Lewis could have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, I missed. I was trying to find a pen real quick. Sorry.
Ms. Bloom.
Ms. Bloom. Okay, yeah, thank you. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to legislative report.
Uh, yes. Um, I had sent out earlier today a copy of the, um, uh, facts information we received from OSBA. And a couple of things along with that, there was a, an attachment that dealt with, um, us having the opportunity as individuals, not as a board, to sign a letter that dealt with, um, supporting the fair school funding plan. And I had completed it. It was just, uh, name, address, and I put down Mr. Price's, uh, social security number on there.
Someone might be showing up to your door.
But I, I would just encourage you, not necessarily saying, "Do it," but it's something to consider. Uh, also, along with that, um, if we were to choose to participate, um, and this would be something that we would need to look into as a board. And part of it is that we would be committed to, I was returning it out there. Um, we would be committing, uh, committing to a lawsuit. Three hundred of the six hundred and some school districts in Ohio are participating in that now. What, what my thought is, and talking to Mr. Price, would be that between now and our next meeting, we do a little bit more research and come up with maybe a direction that we would want to go as a board. And a couple of the things with that, whether we participate in a lawsuit or not, um, what we could be doing is, um, by approving a resolution in support of the fair school funding plan. Uh, a kind of a, a next step. And then that would go to our legislators to make sure that they know where we're coming from uh, on that. So, uh, again, my thought is, between now and our June 9th meeting, that we kind of look at that a little bit more and then maybe make a recommendation as to, uh, one, supporting the resolution, two, do we want to participate in a lawsuit? And what are the specifics of that? And what are the ramifications of, of that? Um, it looks like the cost to participate as a, as a board is relatively minimal. I think it was, uh, like two bucks per student, which would put us at about $600. And I think they're probably able to do that because if you have three hundred school districts participating, then they have a chunk of money to move forward with that lawsuit to make sure that the legislature is participating fully in and funding full fair school funding plan.
Just a, just a quick revision. So the cost would be two dollars per student. It'd actually be about seven thousand. Six hundred would just be three hundred students.
I'm sorry.
So it'd be, we're at like thirty.
Thirty-four hundred, thirty-three hundred.
So sixty, sixty-seven to sixty-eight, somewhere in there.
Thanks for the correction.
Yep, sorry about that.
I left one zero off my, in front of me, uh, which, which is significant. And so that's something we, we need to talk about. And if it's okay with the board, I can work with Mr. Price and the administration and then come back at that next meeting, maybe with a recommendation and a resolution. And they gave us a sample resolution, uh, that we can tweak or just adopt. Uh, any other comments on that part of it? So, so again, feel free to participate. Uh, also, I wanted to mention, um, at the Legislative Liaison webinar, which would have been, it's an hour long. It was last Monday. They basically talked about the fair school funding formula. They talked about the, uh, thirty percent discussion on carryover. Um, one of the things that the person, um, from OSBA mentioned was that it, it appeared that no senators liked what the House was proposing in terms of, um, the fair school funding and that thirty percent. So what that means, we don't know, other than somebody said, "We don't like this." So then it goes into that negotiation stage, once they've kind of worked through that part of the budget. Um, they talked, uh, at the, uh, at that one hour webinar, they talked a little bit about the, uh, SB 158 that, uh, dealt with the banning of cell phones. Um, they talked about HB 114, which talked about kindergarteners. And, uh, this bill talks about, uh, coming up with the same number, the same date for all students to enter kindergarten. And the recommendation that they're putting on this is by the first day of school. So, um, you know, uh, the tough part with that one is, what does that mean in terms of, we start on the twenty-fifth, somebody else starts on the twenty-ninth? So, you know, so again, it throws it into that ballpark of, you know, what is the actual date? Have you heard anything more on that?
Is that like opposed, as opposed to like the, we have like a hard, is it August first cutoff?
Yep. In our district, right now, each district can decide their own. Ours in Fremont is August first. So a student eligible for kindergarten needs to have turned five before August first. Um, and so typically you see that variation, sometimes it's later in the month of August. Um, sometimes up to September first, pretty much the ban. So by flipping that to the first day of school, um, would, I think, be a little bit of a challenge, only because that date changes every year for us.
Right.
Even if we're always the Tuesday, you know, before Labor Day kind of thing, or if you are, yeah.
Well, the legislature sounds like they're kind of playing with the dates and hopefully they're talking to the right people and the right people on our part are advocating to, uh, come up with a solid date like an August first or something like that. Or leave it up to the school district. So, um, let's see. I, I think that was, th- those were a couple of the other ones that jumped out at me. They talked about cybersecurity bill, uh, that's moving through the Senate. And, um, one that I thought was interesting was HB 273, House bill, that talks about changing the activity of farmers from, um, that I think the class one to the class two, which means class one is our, um, residential taxing on property. And right now, it's residential and farmers are class one. And class two are basically businesses, corporations. And they were talking, somebody, you know, in this legislation was talking about moving them to the, um, class two. But they really didn't discuss what that impact was. Because right now, the impact is the farmers basically are taxed on their property, just as you or I are on our homes. And I'm not sure exactly what that formula is for a business to pay on the property tax. Does that affect you at all, Tom?
You know, I don't know. Um, I guess I never.
Right.
For the business, I never paid it. I mean, it was property taxes, but I didn't.
Right.
Really dive into what the difference is between residential or, or corporate or commercial or whatever. I don't.
My, my guess is, my guess is the, my guess is the farmers are, um, lobbying or something like that. And that's brought that into play if it means paying less on their taxes. So.
It is from my prior years. Now, granted, that's been, and fifteen years since I worked in the auditor's office. And the residential versus, um, commercial classes go through different reduction factors. And they also go through different, um, types of valuation. Um, farm land is a very interesting beast all on its own about how they value that. It's based on soil types in every parcel's soil. And each soil type has a different dollar amount associated with it. So just the formula to come up with those, um, values for that class of, um, land is very difficult to calculate. Um, uh, just gives me nightmares thinking back to those days. Not that school finance isn't, doesn't have its own fundness, but, um, so it would change how the distributed, you know, with your residential, if they're going to switch it over to the business or the commercial side, that would be really interesting how that would work out.
The bottom line for us would be.
Yeah.
The concern that it would reduce the amount of money that would flow in.
But there's also, like with, it has to collect so much, so it may just be shifting the burden of who has to make up that dollar amount on the tax fares.
Right. And that's, and that's why this kind of jumped out at me is, you know, uh, that they would be bringing that up and addressing. And so some of those things kind of get a little bit scary. Not, you know, because it throws it in, again, into the unknown as to how that affects the dollars that are available. Um, that was, that was all I had with that. Uh, the other quick comment, I guess, would be the, um, I just want to make sure, when we talk about the Department of Education more at the federal level, and worst case scenario, if we were to lose because of all the changes with Department of Education, if they switch it over to another department and the monies flow, that's great. But worst case scenario is, uh, we, like, in excess of $1.5 million per year, we get and, and most of that's funding things like special education and, uh, some of the, the grants that flow through. If those dollars were not coming to us, then we would still have to provide the services, as I understand it, that, uh, we're committed to under those, uh, at that point, which means those are additional dollars that are going to come out of either monies that are, uh, for our general expenses for the district, which means we have less dollars. So hopefully, the money flows, uh, okay, back to our district. But, you know, that can be something that can be devastating to us or any of the school districts if we don't receive those federal dollars. So whenever you have an opportunity or the people listening, uh, on YouTube, any way that we can educate or advocate, those are the critical things that we need to be doing. So, um, and so I just wanted to kind of reiterate that, that that is something that's very important. Um, that's all I had.
Thank you. Uh, no walk-on items tonight?
No.
Sure. Bringing up to the community, if anyone would like to address the board, they can come to the podium, state their name and address. Kelly, you'd be the only one, I think. So, no taker. Um, real quick, I thought I would do this during the community section of our agenda. I don't do a very good job at this at all, but from the Fremont School Board, I'm our representation on the Vanguard Sentinel School Board. Um, and I should be giving updates about Vanguard Sentinel. We have a lot of students that attend there, plus it is about a minute and a half walk to their front door from here. So, um, just to give you guys a little update, so Vanguard Sentinel had their graduation ceremonies last week. Um, Vanguard had three different ceremonies at Grace Community Church on Wednesday. Um, there isn't a place large enough and they split it up. So the first program was AIM, which is helping those kids that are very credit deficient, um, having some struggles, wanting, needing to get something for graduation. Plus, they also get an industry credential, like a construction trade, or, um, there's a couple of other programs that they can do. So they get a little bit of something, plus their high school diploma. There were seventy kids, um, total that graduated from the AIM program. And then the two other ceremonies were the, uh, they just split up their programs at Vanguard, um, with both, combined, they were about two hundred and ten, two hundred and twenty students that graduated. So total of almost three hundred kids graduated from Vanguard on Wednesday. And then Sentinel down in Tiffin, they have, it's on Thursday. Um, it's always at Tiffin University in their indoor track facility, because it's big enough, we can put a lot, excuse me, a lot of chairs down. So one ceremony down there, um, and they had about two hundred and twenty or two hundred and thirty kids graduate there. So, um, good programs, they're growing, um, with the trades. So what a public school can't afford to offer. Um, it's a great partnership and we work so well with Vanguard and with the AIM program. I mean, it's a collaboration of everything. So and all their different programs, it's just, it's fun to watch them grow and to see what all they're doing and getting out there and, um, getting, you know, these kids graduating or having their industry credentials. Um, and just to give someone an idea of what an industry credential might be. So if you're in auto tech at Vanguard and you graduate and you've been in the program for a couple of years, you will have every, you can have every ASE certification that an auto tech person should have or could have. The only thing that they lack is experience. Um, so basically, they graduate high school, they're ready to get out in the workforce and they have every certification that you could have as an auto tech and they're ready to go. And it doesn't cost them anything. So, um, that would be what an industry credential is. Um, anyway, so I just, I need to do a much better job of letting you guys know and, and everybody at home. I mean, we have a lot of students that go to Vanguard, so always have and always will, I'm sure. Um, so I need to do a better job of this, if there's something down the pike or new program or anything. So anyway, I just thought I'd put that in with the community real quick. So.
Wonderful ceremonies. It was very nice to see our students recognized and be ready for the next steps of life.
Yeah.
Very good.
All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Price, board members. Ms. Parkers, hello.
Hello.
Um, I just have, uh, two quick things just to mention, um, to make sure that you have that information as well as our community. Um, our graduation, Ross High School graduation is slated for Sunday, June 1st, um, at two o'clock at Don Paul Stadium. We hope that all of our community comes out to wish us our seniors well. We have two hundred and thirty-nine eligible graduates this year, which is fantastic to be able to welcome them and send them off. Um, right now, we are looking at great weather, so that's really where I want to stay, but since I have the moment to give the backup plan, I will. Um, and we will make that decision by eleven AM on Sunday morning. If we don't feel that the two o'clock time will be sufficient because of calamity, then we will go for a six PM on Sunday. And if we can't make the six PM Sunday night, we go to seven o'clock on Monday evening. All events would be held at Don Paul Stadium. So we're aiming, hoping for, fingers are crossed for, two o'clock on Sunday, June 1st. Um, the second item that I just wanted to give a shout out for, um, Mr. Price, would you hold up that card just so that I know it's small, but I just think our community.
Zoom in, Corey.
Corey said no doubt.
We have a new business, new business in our town. The Fremont community is proud to welcome a Jersey Mike's restaurant that will be opening out on Sean Drive. And what we've been able to do is partner with them. They've been, they're being extremely generous. Um, and what they've given us are these little cards. And we have sent these cards home. We had, um, about thirty-five hundred of those cards that they printed for us. And we've sent them home so that each family in our school system, as well as all of our staff, will have received one of these cards. And that card makes you eligible, beginning on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, the first day of their grand opening, through Sunday, June 1st, for a minimum three dollar donation. You can obtain a sub when you go. And then what Jersey Mike's, what the owners are doing is they are gifting back the donation dollars for all five days to the district. So for a minimum three dollar donation, any of our families or community members, um, or staff can participate. They will collect all of those dollars and issue us one back, one very nice donation. And just so everyone knows that that donation will be brought back into the district and will be used to support our PBIS programs, which is our Positive Behavior Intervention Systems. And that is a caught you doing something good, where we teach our students some of those right character moves. And we congratulate them when we see them in motion. Um, and that is a program, our PBIS program takes place in all of our elementary buildings, our middle school and our high school. So we felt like that was a program preschool through grade twelve that all of our students can benefit from. And wanted just to give that little shout out. Thank you to the Jersey Mike's, um, owners for being so generous and just making sure that all of our families know what this small card is for, that's going to come home. Um, and those, those will be handed out today and tomorrow and on, on their way to our families. So thank you for all of that. Um, the other items that I have for my superintendent's reports, we have a couple of committees that have met since we met last, um, at our board meeting. And so the first item we have, um, Mrs. Abernathy has met with our CQCC committee. Sarah, are you going to do the?
Sure.
Okay, fabulous.
Um, CQCC is our Curriculum Quality Control Committee. Um, this is the committee that, um, is kind of the first line, um, for any new curriculum, uh, supplements, um, to the already approved, uh, curricula for whatever course or, or lane, um, for our students. Um, so, so if a teacher wants to add anything, um, from a newspaper article to a, a whole online program, uh, they have to come through this committee for that approval. Um, we looked at a cup, a few things on last Thursday. Yep. Um, so an online math program, um, which we, we ended up tabling because of our new. which we, we ended up tabling because of our new curriculum coming in. We want to give that a chance to work, have the teachers be able to work out all of the bugs before we engage them in another online math program. And then, you know, moving forward, it's just tables, I guess, for right now. So moving forward, if that's something that the teachers would think would be helpful, then we can, we can bring that back to CQCC for approval. I believe it was Mrs. Hetrick that came and presented, so we thank her for, for her diligence in that. The Life Skills Program that we looked at, I think probably most of us in this room are watching, have either been through DARE ourselves or have just touched DARE in some, some way. We might be one of the last tribes around using DARE still. I'm sure if I tried really hard, I could find a DARE t-shirt somewhere. So in addition to DARE, which is the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program, there's another curriculum to, to add to, to that that deals with some of the same things like drug, drug and alcohol education, but also additional lessons in problem solving and some of those real world scenarios that might lead a child to those types of behaviors. So we're going to move forward with that. We also looked at a novel list for approval, so.
Thank you. We also had our finance committee. Give a information about our finance.
Our finance committee meeting this month really just focused on my two favorite topics in the world are monthly financial reports and then also our May five-year forecast update, which I told the board members I only wanted to speak about, so I'm not going to have them report this month for the finance committee. Just kidding, they would be able to talk about it, but I didn't want to bore everyone with it twice. So I will get into those two items later on. You can hear more from me.
Thank you. We're all waiting. We're very excited. Yes. Our last committee meeting that we had this past couple of weeks with our Health and Wellness Committee. Like to share a few updates.
Sure. So the Health and Wellness Committee is a self-funded insurance program that is to the district. And some of the things we're trying to roll around is coming up with some challenges we can do over the summer to kind of include health and just different ways to show that you're involved and we're just trying to brainstorm different ways of, how should I say this?
Keeping people engaged.
Keeping people engaged, but kind of doing it where you can kind of self gauge it. We're still, we're rolling things around. I'm not even sure we came up with, to tell you the truth, I think we went pretty easy with it and it was some.
Came up with some incentive possibilities to work on with conjunction with our new wellness portal that'll be rolling out this next school year that we believe we'll be able to hopefully give out staff prizes to help them engage in those different.
Yeah.
I don't know if I must say programs, but.
Activities. Activities. Challenges that.
And it's even knowledge based, there's some video trainings you can do, so. And it's very focused onto the individual person and their health needs. So it'll be very tailored to that individual, individual. And it also ties directly into our health screenings that we do every year. So your results from that will also tie into this health and wellness portal and kind of give you some focused training areas. Like if they notice, I don't know, your blood pressure's up, is it maybe related to stress? Maybe it's related to your job, here's some ways to help combat that, you know, that kind of thing. And there might even be like yoga exercises that they'll have videos on that you can do. So it, hopefully, we're really hoping. We've heard back from staff that they would like some employee wellness, a little bit more focused on, so hopefully this portal will help us with that. And that is through Medical Mutual, who is our I won't go into it, is a carrier of ours for our insurance, employee insurance.
So yeah, basically we were just brainstorming different things to do. We came up with some of those, we're tabling other things, but so then as a committee, we're trying to get some incentives together. Different raffle baskets, just different things we can come up with. We know when school comes back in, it's going to be football season. So that's kind of one of the things we're thinking of, you know, what can we raffle in football season? The people want to be, you know, want to work towards, you know, besides their own goals that they're doing, something that we can give away. So we have some, we have some neat ideas. It was just like, you know, a lot of brainstorming and, but it's fun stuff for people and it's stuff that you can use. And we're just going to see what we can come up with. So yeah, that's kind of, thank you, Megan, for, and I got all the notes right in front of me. I sit here and try and think, you know, what were we talking about at that meeting?
It's one of those days.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you, all of you. I appreciate that. I think just the opportunity to share out from those committee meetings helps keep our, our public informed and our staff informed. So that's wonderful. If you're okay with Mr. Price, I'll continue with recommendations. Fabulous. Item number one, I'd like you, if you would please consider the approval of two donations this evening. We have a wheelchair that will be used here at Fremont Middle School and 10 pairs of gym shoes.
Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
All moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number two, there was a memo that I shared with you that Mrs. Abernathy wrote. There are two items on the agenda. The first one is item number two. That was previously approved. We simply are changing the funding source. So if you took a look at that memo, just to give us some ideas, some of those federal funds that Mr. Nally spoke with previously, we received some additional dollars into our coffers. And we want to make sure that we're spending those funds appropriately aligned to the grants and what is eligible for those grants. And so we took a look at some things that we had recently paid for and we can adjust the funding. So that's all that is there.
Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number three, I ask that you approve the contract with North Point Educational Service Center. This has been something that I feel like a long time in the works because we've been talking about it since November. That this was part of the process and we've done all of the pieces and parts up to this, this is the actual contract moving forward.
I have a motion to approve item three, please.
All moved.
Have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, motion by Ms. Lehman, second by Ms., Ms. Yeah, Lewis.
Not just me tonight.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Wonderful, thank you. Next up, we have the second reading of 27 policies. So I would ask your approval between item four and item 30, which is simply the second reading of those policies. And we did take a look at Ms. Lewis's thoughts and suggestions from last time and those are incorporated in here.
Especially my grammar issues, Ms. Lewis.
Can I get a motion to approve items four through 30, please?
All moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion?
Just for the general public to know, those issues were brought up at the last board meeting and Superintendent Hurt did a great job of getting back to me in a timely fashion. And ironed out all the things with, with legal consult. So I just think that's important for, for the public to know.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number 31, I would ask that we approve a revised 2025-26 calendar. The only change there is just a clerical change. The, the last day for seniors next year is the same day as their mandatory practice and not a day off. On the current calendar, it's just a day off and probably best to have no loophole for seniors that when they have to be present. Let's tighten that up.
Can I get a motion to approve item 31, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number 32, I would ask that you approve to grant a Ross High School diploma to one of our students that has met all of the graduation requirements. Congratulations to Riley Overmeyer for earning this achievement.
Can I get a motion to approve item 32, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item 33, this is the one-to-one student devices for Ross High School. This is the second item from Mrs. Abernathy's memo. So already been approved. We just simply want to change the funding source because we're able to use some federal dollars and save our general fund a little bit.
Can I get a motion to approve item 33, please?
All moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis, any discussion?
I think I would just speak on behalf of the community, the appreciation for being diligent with, you know, our public funds and to be able to use other funding sources when, when available, certainly appreciated.
Thank you very much. I have to give lots of credit there to Mrs. Abernathy, she's watching those, those funds and those federal grants and doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
That's a lot of money we can save.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Start some staff employee pieces, item number 34. We have a following resolution, resignations from Jennifer Luffler, Nicholas Mailey, Christina Rothambueller, Miranda Wamis and Tammy Hottinger. Item number 35, we have some home instructors and some support staff substitutes. And item number 36, I would like to ask your approval to hire Mr. Jordan Mackey as our assistant athletic director. We do have Mr. Mackey in audience with us with his lovely wife, Ashley. And if I could just take a, just a quick moment to give a little bit of information. This was a position, administrative position that we have added so that we can better meet the needs of our student athletes in our district. We have several students that compete regularly in several different athletic events. Hence, Mr. Burnt not here this evening to welcome Mr. Mackey is we're playing a game. Mr. Mackey joins us coming from the Fremont, the city of Fremont. He is currently a program supervisor for the Recreation Department, so he brings a lot of wealth of knowledge of athletics. He has coached numerous sports at numerous levels. He understands children and he understands athletics and he bleeds purple. And I am so happy to combine all of those things and ask for your approval for his appointment as that assistant athletic director this evening. Item 37, we also have a couple other appointments. Cameron Gessner will be joining us as a business teacher at Ross High School. Bethany Jarrett will be returning to the district and will be teaching fifth grade at Atkinson Elementary. Hannah Mueller will be at one of our science teachers at Ross next year. And Melissa Plano, I believe, it will be middle school math. Item number 38, we have some coaches returning to us, some of them for football season next year. I guess all of them for football, variety of levels. Item number 39, we have some lay coaches coming on board, coming back to us for next year. Kudos to Mr. Burnt for getting us those fall coaches. Item number 40, we have student teacher mentors, beginning with Wendy Aiken and ending with Julie Yoder. Item number 41, we have some special event workers. We are hoping to house some, host some baseball games this week. We'll see weather providing. I know there was a plan for that last week as well. We'll see. Item number 42 is just a change of date with a resignation, retirement date for Mr. Bates. Item number 43 are some status changes for individuals who have moved on to that next step. Item 44, we have some program appointments, summer school program appointments. So those are our teachers, beginning with Debbie Bates and ending with Lisa Willie, that will be at Lutz Elementary. Julie Dablin to Michelle Merrill will be at Otis Elementary. Dawn Saunders and Regina Reed will be our secretaries in those two elementary buildings. Our bus drivers that will be facilitating our summer intervention, beginning with Michael Baker through Lori Smith. And lastly in there, we have for middle school bus drivers, Peggy Rios and Carrie Rudd. That was a lot. I ask that you approve all of those items, please.
Can I get a motion to approve items 34 through 44, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bloom, discussion?
Just want to welcome Mr. Mackey. And I'm sure you'll do a great job. You know, I think when you mentioned that we added a position, but we actually have done some restructuring there, correct?
We have. You are, you are very accurate, Mr. Nally. Thanks for pointing that out. So we have two longtime supplemental positions that both individuals are retiring at the end of this year. And when I became aware of that at the beginning of the year, that was part of our process of taking a look to see how best we meet the needs of all of those student athletes that I talked about and we have several. So with the absence of Mark King and Joe Hershey, who will be both resigning there and retiring out of our district, we were left with some pretty big holes. So we looked at the reworking of those job duties and that was the creation and the add of this position. So we will be eliminating those supplemental contracts and adding a full-time staff member who will be with us to do a lot of, a lot of different things in the district, but filling those two big positions that are going to be.
And how are we covering the trainer part of that?
The athletic trainer will be a separate position. And that is currently posted through our partner, North Point. And those interviews will be taking place as well, this week, I believe they are. So that too is a slight change because that was a supplemental contract that Mr. Hershey held and held for 40-ish years, right? And so I, I know that that's a challenge to fill a position when someone has been with it that long. The position that they're leaving is never the position that they took. So in order for the district to be creative in filling that position and looking at some of our, some of our partner districts around us are doing, the need for a full-time athletic trainer will be the, one of the next pieces you'll see on the agenda. Oh no, no, I'm sorry, you won't see it on this agenda because they'll be hired through North Point. Yeah, great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just welcome Jordan. We're looking forward to working with you. I think when, when Mrs. Hurt says that you guys bleed purple and white, I like, I, I just need the community to really understand that. Former athletes for the district, their children are involved in sports. They're Fremont people and I think there's a lot to be said for that, to understand like the the importance of not just athletics in our community, but their, their own children are student athletes. And that, that can't be missed either, that the importance in their own home about being a student athlete will hopefully carry on through, through the district with the other athletes. So welcome aboard. Yeah.
We'll be seeing you around.
They're at most, they're at most athletic events anyway. Paid a little bit to be there instead of having to pay for the tickets, so.
And I'll give you a tip. The community of Fremont, they're looking for some playoff games at our stadium for football. Hopefully our boys, but if something happens, we want just playoff games there. So they've been trying to fly this. We have a nice stadium.
We do.
Have a lot of people in there. Yeah. This must, but I just want to, but they really do want it. Yeah.
All right. Roll call, please.
Oh, shoot. Sorry, I scrolled down too far. Okay. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Wow. I'm sorry about that one.
That was a big one. I'm sorry. All right. Item number 45 is an additional hire for our summer intervention program. This is for Cassidy Price, just pulled her out for obvious reasons.
Can I get a motion to approve item 45, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Abstain, but motion approved.
Thank you. Item number 46, just some substitutes for our summer program, beginning with Maria Sassi and ending with Michael Kobel.
Can I get a motion to approve item 46, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion approved.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Welcome, Mr. Mackey.
To reporting the treasure.
Hopefully I can move through my report much easier than I've moved through this board meeting. Good evening. I'm so happy to report that all of our certified staffs, current certified staffs, next year contract and salary notices have been sent out through our HR software. I cannot explain how huge of an endeavor it is every year to send out these notices. There's about 200 and just for numbers, probably under, right under 250 notices that get to, have to be sent out to certified staff. And you see on the board agendas, you know, some of them are new contracts, some of them are moving from two-year to continuing or one years to two years. There's all different moving pieces and parts to these. And that's just the New Year's, then new contracts. Then we also have salary notices that go out to everyone else that's not getting a new contract this year. So for everyone to have, we used to run off of a spreadsheet that multiple people would check and you would hope that you had every box filled out correctly, which left room for error. We have streamlined the process so that HR enters from the board agenda, what is approved? Then they send us out a list, say, hey, check this over because mistakes still do happen. And then my payroll department and Jennifer Zucker, my assistant, checks their lists, make sure everything matches. And this is where the people should be. And then they just send it out via email. The employees get the notice or the contract, they sign it and it goes right into their electronic file in a system. It's not, we have to make so many copies. Everyone gets hand-checked and then put in their file. Things get lost in this inter-school mail, all kinds of different things. Yes, there's still going to be some errors just because that's life, but this seems to be making it much easier to manage. The software tells us who signed them, who hasn't signed them. We can send reminders electronically. So this is a really big step for our two departments, be able to utilize the software this way. And like I said, it automatically files in the employees' personnel file in this program. So if once Jennifer hits the send button and Jennifer's out for the day, but somebody calls and says, hey, my contract says this and it's supposed to send that, I can get in there, see what we sent and then say, okay, this is why, or this is why it doesn't, it doesn't say that, or you know, I can check things much easier rather than have to go to her office space, try to find the physical copy and hope I find the right version, because the way my brain files things is different from everyone else's and I know that. So it, it's a much easier process now for everyone involved in, like I said, my whole staff and HR has access to this one system, so they can, everybody can look at it. You're not getting the phone call and going, the other person's not here, so I can't answer your question, which is not something we like to do. So we're really happy with being able to fully utilize this program. And this process is going to be a lot slicker, I think, for us. We used it a little bit last year with our classified staff, so it will, it's nice to being able to use it for certified. We're going to try admin next and kind of go from there. So we're slowly moving through the contracts for this year, but it's, it's such a huge process and this is making it what seems to be much nicer. So really happy there. And I'm going to apologize. It's just the worst time of the year. I hate spring, summer. My allergies like to kick up, so I'll probably have to make numerous drink breaks and cough breaks, so sorry. And like Mr. Nally mentioned about federal grants, that is constantly something that Denise, Abby and I are always listening for right now in the different webinars that we're going to and, or listening to and watching and conferences that I know Abby just went to a federal grants conference and they kind of got a picture of, we should be okay, but we're constantly looking for that update. How are federal grants looking? As of right now, they're seen to run the same. They're, the process is going to stay the same. So we are constantly operating on what we know at this moment and to make the best decision with that, but we are constantly monitoring that. Who's professional organization hears a rumor first and hey, be prepared for this. So that's, and all three of us are in different ones and they're really good, solid groups, I think. So, but it's something we always have to pay attention to because with those dollars, we have to, I'm going to say this wrong. That's a plant.
Only supplement.
We cannot, the plant.
So if, yeah. So if those programs were to go away, we have to be able to use the general fund dollars to keep those programs going, rather than this money isn't just taking things out of general fund and paying for it. So. So those federal grants and what's going on with the different areas of our government right now is just always something we're continually having to monitor because we do understand that things can change. And that's being highlighted, I would say more so this year than ever. So it's just fun and interesting and making it so we're not bored. On here tonight, I also have our, we met with Sedgwick, who is our workers' comp, TPA. They help us with our workers' comp claims and making sure that we are handling those different cases correctly so that we're not overspending the district's money. And you know, making sure we're getting our employees the care they need. Mrs., oh my goodness, Mrs. King, can't believe that her name escaped me. We always joke, she's my best friend. We talk almost every day, even if she's not at work. Her office works with them constantly on making sure our employees are, the care they're getting, getting approved on time so that there's no lag if there's any workers' comp claims going on. The Sedgwick group does a great job for us. And we are able to renew with this retrospective rating program, which is a great program for us so that we can keep the, those claim costs down, but still taking care of our employees. For our April financials, where we have, April, we closed out and got our last real estate payment, which is really great. We were able to see that we got our one-time payment back from Nexus Pipeline, so we were very glad to see that. So that whole court cases, when's this going to come to us, has finally ended. And we got our one-time payment of $2 million. And then we, I mean, barring any new pipelines that come into this area, I hope, never mind, I won't go there. I'll go there later, actually. That's just a one-time payment and we, it was back taxes that they owed to us from a valuation complaint that they had filed against the state. So that is not something we will see continuing on, but it was nice to get that settled out and all figured out. And trying to look real quick. And just another mention of federal funds, you will see that our salaries are an uptick in our expenses. And again, that's really inflated this year because last year we were able to utilize Esser dollars, which is a federal grant that we had. I'm going to say we had a total of about 10 to 12 million dollars. I don't remember.
It's a good ballpark.
Okay.
It was all COVID-related and post-COVID, so that districts could be, use some of those funds to assist.
It came in three different rounds. There was just Esser 1, Esser 2, and then ARPS or, so that's why I don't know the exact dollar amount off the top of my head, but I do remember it was to the tune of somewhere between 10 and 12 million dollars. And so you will see that coming back into the general fund. So salary and benefits looks a little bit more of an increase where there's not really an increase due to us adding staffing or paying our staff more. It's just really, we're taking on that expense again into the general fund. And our, just because it's kind of a highlight of our current legislation for the month of April, we closed out at 126 days of, for True Days Cash. The new policy that we just wrote for our True Days Cash, our goal, I think, was to run between 160 and I believe 130 days. That's at fiscal year end. So that's not what that True Days Cash focuses on, just because our cash payments fluctuate so much from month to month. The best look at it is at the fiscal year end. So I just kind of wanted to point that out on, oh, it might look like we're inching towards the cap of that new policy that we are putting in place, but we're actually not. That policy is actually just looking at the year, fiscal year end, not our month-to-month basis. And the last item for my report tonight will be the five-year forecast. I'm going to give a huge disclaimer on this. It is a, any forecast is your best educated guess. And usually ours are pretty decent. As you get into the fourth and fifth year, you're getting quite a few years out, so it's not as good of a guess, but this year's is a little bit more unknown. With it being the, this fiscal year is the end of our biannual budget. So the state is currently working on the budget. And whatever roller coaster ride that is seeming to be. So we don't, this forecast focuses on this current fiscal year and then the four continuing after. Sorry, it seems to hit me later in the evening as we get. And I just start coughing more and more. But, so the five-year forecast that I have prepared, I've really been really conservative with our revenue, revenue forecasting. They rise a little bit throughout the years of the forecast, but I do want to highlight that the first year of the forecast has that $2 million payment from the Nexus Pipeline. So while I'm saying, oh yes, we've kept revenues growing, you might look at the end revenue line and go, well, Megan, this year's is 52.7 and you end the forecast revenues of 52.4. That's not growing well. That's because you had to take that $2 million Nexus Pipeline payment out. So I just kind of wanted to highlight that. Yes, we are projecting that revenues will grow slightly, but it doesn't look quite that obvious if you're not seeing that that $2 million is in that tangible personal property line. The biggest funder, funding areas for the district for revenues is going to be, sorry. Our real estate taxes, state funding and public utilities. So with state funding being 30% of our revenues, what they do with this budget really is going to play a huge factor into how this forecast plays out. Okay. So that's.
Megan, so when you talk about the utilities, that's because legislation right now is reducing, looks like it's going to reduce what a business would have to pay in taxes on like a pipeline or?
Not so much really what, like public utilities isn't as big of a business anymore. There is legislation that just passed and the governor signed into law that anything new that would come in would be taxed at a much lower rate. Hopefully I can click over to my, I want to say it used to be they would be taxed at 80% and it's moving down to 20. Anything new used to be 84 and now it's going to be moved down to 22. So as a whole, and like I said, that's anything new, but we've heard very specific rumors that current companies may file for bankruptcy and then start new companies. Therefore, anything they would put in would be new at the lower rate. So.
Anytime you hear, yeah. Anytime you hear a fluctuation like moving from 80% down to 20%, you know that that means less money coming
Yep.
to the district.
Yeah, we've always kept that tangible personal property taxes low, relatively low anyways, but even just kind of hearing where this legislation is going with it, we're backing it off a little bit less each year.
Did they ever give a reason, and I'm sure they didn't, but 60% drop?
Well, it's to encourage new, so that we can get more utility companies in for the betterment of our communities.
Does somebody not have electricity somewhere in our state? I mean, what?
To bring in new competition so that we can have better competitive rates.
Well, that's not going to happen. Because it's all like I'm I mean, where I'm at, nothing against Toledo Edison, but Toledo Edison is my electric supplier. It's their lines, it's It's their lines, it's their polls. I mean, that doesn't change. So bring in all you want to, but it's not like they're going to run another set of polls and new lines for people and you can decide.
Maybe.
I guess at a 60% reduction, they've got a lot of money to play with now, I guess.
I, because I was looking for the exact house bills this was and I pulled it up. And when you Google it, it is all in favor of this and how this is a great move for the state of Ohio and how they're going to bring in a lot of new options for utilities. So it was just interesting to see, and none of it mentioned between the two bills, it, neither one highlighted the specific ones I was looking for or the specific parts. So I couldn't say exactly which one it was. So it was just interesting to see the complete, it never mentioned anything about how much it was going to reduce. It just said it was going to make so many more opportunities. So it's, like I said, it's just really interesting to see that other side of it and how they're promoting it and making it, you know, it's going to help give lower rates to our.
And obviously they have a crystal ball, so they know that this is going to create better competition. I'll believe it when I see it because they say that all the time in there. So.
So a couple of other things that are affecting our funding right now. We get poverty funding in the state formula and this year it was based fully off of our CEP numbers. And because we were in our first year of being full CEP, it inflated that funding a little bit and next year they're going to look at a different, probably our direct cert number. So we will see a reduction in that line as well. So that's been built into the forecast as well. Oh, and just so that you guys are aware, they are predicting right now that the Senate will drop their budget June 3rd or 4th. So we're hoping they'll be able to start seeing simulations of what our district specifically will get June 3rd or 4th. But this forecast has to be submitted by May 31st, so it'll be with what we currently, I know, Sarah.
That's like so backwards though.
I know. And so we don't even have simulations of what the current Senate bill is going to be.
We're not going to tell you the budget, but please make yours.
Yes. But they're going to fix any, everything with this budget. So it's great.
Right on.
Yeah. I just wanted to kind of let you know where they're at in the process.
Can I ask one quick question on, it just, I saw it and Mr. Gorbets will be happy that I'm asking this question. So under revenues, we have tuition and open enrollment. Can you give me an idea real quick of, because Mr. Gorbets, when I first got on the board, it was, we need to stop the bleeding of open enrollment out instead of open enrollment in. Denise, maybe this is more a number that you would know where we're at in that because we were way upside down before. And I know we were trending better.
We are trending better. I would say that that open enrollment number is plateaued in the last couple of years. So we are, we, we are definitely maintaining more students than we were historically. I don't have that number off the top of my head. I could, I can certainly get that to you. And I would also say that we definitely have students coming into our district as well for a variety of reasons. So I think that we're attempting to rebalance that.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I'd be curious to know and just in a ballpark kind of way, Mrs. Hurt, like the students that leave the district for non, non-traditional school endeavors. Like what's the retread on that? How many of those kids end up coming back to the district?
I can take a look at that and give some actual number, just to buffer some numbers.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, do half of them come back? Do, you know what I mean? I'd just be curious about, about that and in no hurry for that information. Just curious.
Sorry to get you off track, Megan.
No, you're fine. So those are just kind of the areas I wanted to highlight on the revenue side of the forecast. We are trending, you know, to having revenues increase over the next couple of years, which is, you know, always a positive thing when you look at the flip side, which is our expenses and those are trending to increase as well for us just due to inflation and normal. Not that we're looking to spend more money, but just things cost more. We all see that everywhere. I just went and bought a hundred dollars worth of groceries and it got three bags. Yeah, I was like, I don't feel like this was a lot of items that should have added up that quickly, but. So our three largest expense drivers, obviously the top two salary and benefits. Everybody knows that we're in the business of people. Clearly the, every single one of our board agendas reflects that. And then purchase services, which our ESC bill factors into that. And that's a large expense as well, which is more people. So, you know, you get what you pay for. So we try to get decent quality people and we have a new ESC for coming for this fall. And while we're not necessarily looking at a cost savings for that, we're just hoping to see some better services and support. And I feel like we've actually already seen a little bit of that come through to us. So I'm kind of hoping to see that really keep going this fall, but keep a watch on that expense as well. Because like I said, that's one of our top three drivers is purchase services and that's where that contract falls is in that area.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
Under salaries and wages, I know we've talked board meetings for the last probably nine months about the great retirement exit that is going to occur. Where we have teachers who have taught in the district for a number of years coming up on, you know, their retirement time and the funding associated with that. So is that within this five year forecast or?
In a way, if you look at the transfer outline, for the last couple of years, we opened a severance fund.
Right.
So, and every year we've transferred some of our cash reserves into that fund to help us prepare for this. You will see in this year that there's $5.1 million allotted for transfers out. Two million of that is that pipeline money that we are saving for capital projects that might come up that we're going to need to have that $2 million for. But in that, there's also as well a transfer to severance fund because there's a I'm trying to think of how to say this. There's, there's quite a bit of money that comes with severances.
Sure.
And so we've been trying to save for that with those transfers out. That's for us unless we are in an issue where some of our like food service or our self-insurance lines, unless those funds need help from general fund, our transfer out for the last couple of years have been to our capital projects fund and our severance funds. And that's just the district's way of being able to save some of our small cash reserves to plan for the future because, you know, we know we're going to have these severances and we have some long-term staff that has racked up what they've earned.
Absolutely. That was a perfect way to say that.
They've earned these severances to be paid out. They, I had two retirees go back and forth to see who had missed the least amount of work. And at this point, it didn't even matter because there's a cap on how much you can get paid out for. And it was just the, and I had to go back to before I was even born to look at attendance records. And I liked to throw that in their faces.
I'm sure they love to hear that.
They did. They were male, so actually they weren't. I was like, thought about it, not to throw gender in there, but usually they're, they don't care as much. But, um, you know, they've, we've got a lot of retirees that have taken minimal amount of sick time off and that's unfortunately becoming rare, more rare.
Very dedicated staff.
Yep.
And, you know, so those severances are quite, can be quite large. And so, you know, I'm glad we have that money set aside to be able to account for that.
When you define severance, that is earned vacation, I'm sorry, earned sick leave over the course of time? Are there other benefit type pieces that fall into severance?
So part of their union's negotiated contracts and in our administrator as well. You, there's certain language, it differs per contract. If you use less than so many sick days per year, I'm going to say on average, like less than four, but there might be one more, one less depending on the contract. And it also depends how long your year is defined. We have different employees that work different amount of time. So if you, let's say if you take less than four days of sick time in your school year, you can earn two days of severance. And so they can build those up. And again, there's a cap on how many differs per contract. Can be 64 maybe? It's right around that area, but so they can accumulate that many days from not taking sick time because you can only get paid out like half of your sick day.
And then our contract employee, people that are under contract like administration, they're able, they earn vacation. And are they, they're able to?
They have some language as well that's similar to this about accumulating some severance days. But the number of days differs with our admin contract.
And again, based on the contract number of days that they work in that year.
Right.
Okay.
So a lot of variety to that, but I think all to the point of there's language in the contract that helps guide what that would look like for each employee.
So.
Thank you.
Yep. So so yes and no, Sarah, kind of in a savings way, because we are starting to see a lot of long time.
And we've been talking about it for the better part of, I mean, I, I said nine months, but it's the better part of a year, year or more where we see people who have put 30 plus, 40 years into the district, like starting to retire.
Right.
So.
And that's long time dedicated staff.
Absolutely.
The case for the what? Next three or four years, probably?
You're correct. They just lowered it to 32.
32 for our certified staff.
Yeah.
So there'll be a lot hitting those marks.
You missed it, so she'll still be around.
Oh, bummer. So, yeah, that, that's what those transfer outs are, is our way of being able to plan for the future. For us to move that money, it has to be very transparent. It's through a board agenda.
Yep.
But at the same time, if there was some other expense that came up that we needed that money for, we would be able to have it on a board agenda and move it back into the general fund for a purpose we need. On that same note, I kind of want to go into, we've had a lot of talk about the percentage of cash carryover being capped in the budgets. We don't know where that's going to fall, but I do want to kind of explain that is currently, we're being told that is after those, that transfer outline. It would be, that would include those trans. Yeah. Your percentage of expenditures would include those transfers out. So they would not be part of your cash balance. Because once you take your revenue and subtract out your expenditures, you would have that cash balance for the year. And those transfers out would be in your expenditures. So that would not.
Positive.
Yes. So that is a way we can save money and not have our collections changed due to too high of a cash balance.
Sure.
But I'm also going to say, we also would then have to present as part of this new legislation potentially to our budget, county budget commission, what our plan is with those. And we have very specific plans. We have a 12-year-old middle, middle school that is probably going to need, we, do you know about how much we spent last year on the infrastructure to put in? It's like a hundred thousand, right?
A hundred and 80,000.
Okay.
Ish.
A hundred and 80,000 to put in new boards to keep up with technology. So, you know, keeping up with technology, any sort of structural things that we might need a new roof. And then we have five buildings that are pretty much on the same schedule for everything to go out at once. So what we're, you know, we say a little bit of negative stuff about the legislator, legislators and what they're, you know, doing with the budget, but we can also look at it and say, okay, they're saying we need to plan and utilize these other funds for us to save money and keep us from going to the public to ask for new levies. So, you know, as long as we get to keep these funds out of that cash balance calculation, then we can make plans to save this money for the district, move it in there. It's very transparent. Everybody would know that we're doing it. And we have plans for it. It's not just us sitting on money going, oh, I've got, you know, this is totally arbitrary, but $30 million and I'm going to have a hundred thousand dollars in severance. Like, you know, we have very specific needs for this.
So it's by no means a slush fund.
Exactly. Thank you.
That's what I think people need to understand is that those dollars are dedicated and that we will be able to extend out maybe from when we would have to ask for a levy. Because again, when you, when you're planning out those levies, you're heavier at the beginning of dollars coming in and those dollars are going to be less at the end because everything's more expensive in four years or in five years.
Yeah.
So.
Yes. So those, those funds are really now our saving plans. So. Sorry. But as we move down the forecast, you know, are looking at our expenditures, they're on the rise as well. Just because we have to factor in for those kinds of things, things, you see it all the time. Costs just go up. The really interesting thing, when somebody first told me this, I kind of laughed at them. But the closer that our percentage of salary and benefits as a percent of revenue, the closer it gets to 80%, the closer you will see this forecast hit deficit spending. And you see that as we get into the fourth and fifth year of the forecast, the fourth year, we just have, we're just, we almost break even that year. And we're at 77, it's almost 78% of salary and benefits as a person of revenue. And then we are almost at exactly 80% in the fifth year. And in the fifth year, we hit deficit spending and it just tips that balance for us. So. Oh, and we also had other grant funds as well that also affected our salary and benefits just as another area to highlight that we are not just spending a ton more on salary and benefits. We were also utilizing some state wellness grant funds that has ran out as well. So we are fully back to pretty much supporting our own. Yeah. So I just really wanted to highlight, we are not spending an exorbitant amount more on salary and benefits. It's just, we have, we were able to utilize some funds and now they're coming back to our general fund. So. And now they're coming back to our general fund. So. And without reading my whole presentation page by page, I think I've highlighted pretty much everything that in this forecast, obviously, if you guys have questions, feel free to shoot me. Any questions that you have? If you have any right now.
Think we've asked along the way.
And then I will turn it back over Mr. Price then for approval.
Um, first one, can I have a motion to approve item forty-seven for uh, the Sedgwick Rating Program?
So.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Thinking by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. Then uh, I'm forty-eight is the April financial report. Can I get a motion to approve item forty-eight, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Uh, next is the five year forecast that uh, Megan went through. Could I have a motion to approve item forty-nine, please? Motion by Ms. Lehman, could I have a second?
Everybody says second.
They want it done as much as I do.
Eeny, meeny, miny, moe. Ms. Lewis, any discussion?
Nice job, Megan. Thank you for being prepared um, and answering our questions and all that.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis? Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. I'll let you go over the next.
I forgot about my last one. As Mrs. Hurt discussed earlier, we had some additional funds come into our grants this year. And, and we want to be able to spend those down as quickly as possible. We have to. Um, so we met last week, planned it out and we want to be able to get those, that money moved into lines and get it spent down. And last is uh, I'm gonna say that is ACE mentoring potentially, and they're just spending down some cash in there. Yeah. It's some, okay. Yep. So some old funds that no longer fell in line with anything. So we want to get it moved. And it's still in that ACE mentoring area. So we wanted to be able to utilize those so, and spend those down. So.
Right. Can I get a motion to approve item fifty, please?
So.
Bloom, could I have a second? Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. All right, moving on to board member communication. Done.
Oh, yeah. Uh, having had the opportunity uh, last couple of weeks to attend a few events, the Hall of Fame uh, induction was uh, a very good, good ceremony. Um, well deserved uh, individuals that got in. And, and then also with the gold medal banquet, it's amazing to realize uh, I was counting up, there was over seventy students that uh, from grades nine to twelve, who have uh, maintained a four point O average. And I think that's pretty amazing. And uh, shows the commitment and um, the types of students that we're generating in our uh, school system. Uh, the other part of that is um, with the banquets, it was really kind of neat to look at the facility to see that we're able to have caterers. Uh, it's, it's a nice, it's a nice space. Um, you know, we had some of the uh, square tables and then we had the long and narrow. And, and it really accommodated um, those uh, those uh, groups of students and their parents and, and then with the Hall of Fame. And then being able to move into the um, Performing Arts Center. We're just very fortunate to have uh, those facilities and and keeping them maintained. Looking forward to graduation uh, this Sunday. Uh, last year I wasn't able to attend because I was ill at the time. But um, I'm just really looking forward to uh, the graduation. And just congratulations to all the, the athletes, the individuals involved in music, academics. And again, I, I don't want to overuse the word amazing, but our kids are amazing. And that's pretty much all I had.
Sarah?
Um, just to piggyback a little bit off of what Mr. Nally said, um, John and I were both at the teen leadership. Their end of the school year wrap up on all of the projects that, that, that class did. Just amazing, like what they um, put out for the community. Shout out to Heidi Gallagher, uh, she just does a great job um, with these kiddos, not just she, she really seems to foster a sense of leadership with, with these students. So they take ownership of every project. They do, each one of them has, you know, multiple projects. She encouraged us, you know, after, after that presentation, go ask them about their projects. So she really wants them to not just be able to execute the project, but be able to, to talk about what they, what they've done and really some neat community outreach from, from that group. So that was, I was, I was really glad to be invited to, to that. Thank you to Jersey Mikes for this really neat partnership and Mrs. Hurt, I think it's important to, to note also that they reached out to, to the district. So that's just part of something that they, they do when they open up these particular owners. When they open up a shop in a community, um, they try to seek out opportunities to give back. Um, so I think it's really cool um, that they selected the district. And then I just think it's a great how, how you all have decided how to disperse the, the um, the donation is very thoughtful as far as you don't want all the high school kids to get everything. You don't want all, just the middle school kids. So it'll go throughout the district, which is, which is awesome. And then just congratulations to all of our graduates, both our Vanguard students and our um, our raw students who will graduate on Sunday.
Laura?
I have to say that um, these past couple of weeks, I had a family emergency come up and I wasn't able to attend some of the events that I wanted to attend and that kind of sad me because I wanted to see what was going on and be there in the mix, but there's always an extra year. Um, so I did attend the ones that I could, um. Yeah, I'm just, I guess what I have to say is I'm just looking forward to seeing all the graduates on Sunday. I think it's gonna be beautiful weather out there and I remember last year how rewarding it felt to give those kids those diplomas because they were so proud of themselves and I can't, that's just a good atmosphere to be in and it I think it makes everybody feel good. So I can't uh, wait to be in the atmosphere again. That's what I'm looking forward to.
Laura?
Um, thank you to Aubrey for the pledge. She was too cute. Um, and the gold medal banquet, that was, I, I love being part of that and going to that and seeing those kids get their medals and other uh, printers, three of them won the printers. So that's always a fun time. And then um, congratulations to Riley Overmeyer on her diploma. It's a something well earned. And welcome, Jordan. And thank you to all the coaches and the volunteers and all the the teachers that are gonna do the summer programs to help out. That's, I mean, to give up and have off to help with the kids. That's awesome. And graduation, it's always, that's always a fun time too. And seeing all the kids come down and get their diplomas and parents and everybody all excited to see them get them. And congratulations to all the seniors for making it through and getting on, moving on and doing their new event, you know, their adventures and moving on, see what they can come up with.
Thank you to Aubrey for coming and leading us in the pledge. It's always great to see some of our students, especially the younger students where
She didn't want to lead you.
She liked being up here. I could have sat out there with Shelley.
She would have ran the gavel.
Yeah, she liked hitting that gavel. So, but it's nice to see some of the younger kids. You don't get to see them at the sporting events or the concerts or stuff. So it's, it's cool to have them be a part of it. Um, thanks to Jersey Mikes, like other board members have said, um, what a great partnership and a great way they do it. And in business world, it's kind of, it's part of their DNA that they give like that. So great job for them at what they do for all the communities where they're a part of and how they help make a difference. So thank you to them for, and for just opening and having us on their on their radar and coming to us and wanting to do that. So um, congratulations to all our seniors. We'll see you at graduation. We won't get to talk to every one of you. Um, but we'll be there to hand you your diploma. So congratulations to them. And um, with that, no need for executive session tonight. So can we have a motion, a motion for adjournment, please?
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman.
There you go.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yeah.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved, meetings.